Probably a little bit.
So with that, if we were to go over it, like you're saying, I think Kevin, if we go out and get bids, we have to know all the criteria on how this thing is gonna be serviced, how it's gonna be warranty. Because I don't wanna get into a bind where now all of a sudden, we can't get a warranty. Or it would be warranty, but are we gonna have a whole bunch of downtime and then we have to go out and rent the machine anyway?
Right.
I think if I go through the rebid process again, it would be, they need to be bonded this time.
So that.
Right, so you have all the explanations, so then you're not sitting here trying to tell us something.
Well, yeah, I just, it it needs to be apples to apples, you know? You don't know exactly on the bid process. I think that's a reasonable thing. I, I'll make a motion that we don't accept any of the bids and we allow Kevin to rebid the uh, or the.
How sexy.
Did we say it correctly?
I'll second that motion, but I got one small question. Do we use this skid steer much through the year? Like after June, do we use it much?
Uh, the one, wheel one we have now doesn't get maybe hundred dollars or nothing, so it's not a lot, but this is a track unit, so we would use it out. Uh, our cover works because, I don't know if you've ever run it, but a track unit doesn't do that hopping and it's much easier to use when you're level in third.
That's fine. Yeah, I agree.
That's probably the biggest reason we don't take the wheel one out there, cuz it, I mean.
It's hopping all over the place.
And then you're fixing it anyway.
On whatever location. For instance, Grant Close uses one for packing culverts and he needs some packing standards, just the track. So that tells you that they, they do a good job packing, just drive it up the alley.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of rebidding signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Well, it's very.
Well, now you can write the, get apples to apples on everything, make sure we got the clarification on it. That way you're not sitting here saying, yeah, we can, we can. We've been writing one forever, so what's, what's thirty two hundred bucks for that one?
Yeah, as, as already know, I know that we'd be able to work on basically anything John did, so um, any other questions or anything else?
Just don't want to put someone in the bind and then.
Yo.
This will create a little less work for both.
And that could be like the other question is to find out, would we get in trouble using that?
Right. First thing I think was that, you've heard that argument both ways, I'll tell you that right now.
What was it called?
Source of?
Maybe that's something we'll research and find out. I think it might be from bigger candy, uh, if Josh Galian stayed out of his, hold that some, out of your question. Okay.
That's reasonable.
Perfect. Okay, anything else, Kevin?
Uh, no, I'm not.
Okay, let you go, thanks for coming.
Thank you. You too. Okay, the next, these are all the bids that we took for uh, graveling, chip seal, hop mix, motor oil. Uh, these were advertised in the papers, so everybody had the opportunity, they, these are good to go. Uh, we just had the, on most of our gravel jobs, we just had the two bidders, one project had three of it. When we see the results, they're probably a bit easier.
You think you go with the most bid on all of them?
I am, yes.
So. We have a motion in the second to accept the low bid across the board. Any further discussion?
Is this for all projects listed? Or we're just doing gravel?
All of these are gravel, chip seal.
You're all right with all of them?
I don't know, let's see. Hop mix, probably.
That's enough?
I'll do, yeah, we'll do gravel, we'll do the gravel.
Okay, move it across the board for gravel.
I think that's wrong.
Second.
So to make sure we're doing it legally.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting a little bit signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion is carried.
By chip seal.
Chip seal, uh, more seal, who has gotten our projects for the last ten, maybe fifteen years and were extremely happy with what they do, so I, I.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to go with more seal, go down the chip seal project with a little bit.
A second. Okay, we have a motion in the second, uh, to accept a little bit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion is carried.
Uh, hop mix, roller lanes, we did this stuff, one bidder, Stratocorporation, and. Last year, just for information, our last year, our bid was ninety five dollars for asphalt applied. And seventy eight dollars at the plant, so that's just kind of the oil and everything's gone. But I would suggest that we, uh, accept their bid also.
So moved. Second. Okay, we, uh, have a motion in the second to accept the single bid you received from Strata. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion is carried.
And the last one is our roller oil. Candy, just for information, had CaliMet Superior has changed their name to Husky Energy. And uh, we've had their, their bid for, I mean, we're happy with servicing them students, so I would suggest we accept their little bit also.
So moved. Second. Okay, we have a motion in the second to accept the little bit for roller oil. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried.
All right, any other questions? Files and projects. Okay, moving on, uh, we got the invoice from Butler for the three motor graders for seven hundred and seventy seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and one penny. And along with that, we have the invoice for, for oil, filters and some parts for, uh, servicing the three older. Three other motor graders for eight thousand nine hundred and ninety two dollars and forty four cents, so motion to pay those two.
So moved. Second. Would you just repeat the, the full cost one more time of the seven hundred, oh, you have that here, seven seventy seven? Okay, and so your motion is to cover both of those costs?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Do we have a second?
Yep.
Oh, okay, perfect. Uh, so roll call then.
Brett?
Aye.
Lightcon?
Aye.
Oak?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
All right, we have some broken glass, uh, one, one window on a payloader and two motor graders, one back window and a couple doors. And Comsons did those, and for all three of them, the bill didn't get over twenty five hundred, so. Now, the bill is two thousand eight hundred and ten dollars and forty five cents for all three units.
Move to that. Second.
Was that, uh, submitted to insurance?
No. What's our deductible on that? I think it's a hundred dollars. Which we probably, we're still not too late to do that.
Was that something we probably wanna do before, why does someone pay it for?
No.
It's just.
It's not like we use it every day. Is that, is it something that we should be submitting to the insurance?
Probably. If it's a hundred dollar deductible. All right, what do you think?
Hundred dollars?
Do you check in on that or?
Yeah, I mean, I'm pretty sure it's a high as thirty.
Well, even, even if it's still, you'd still pay it.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, I'm still gonna pay it.
So, still there, I'm asking it.
Oh, your question on the reading? I think you could have three claims.
We've got two claims already with, uh, well, okay.
Besides that, this one.
Yeah.
Okay, so did the motion still?
Oh, regardless, regardless, we gotta get a paid.
Just pay it.
Listen to that.
Yeah, I'll show the second to, to just pay the.
Look at the hell he truth is.
Uh, roll call, please.
Oak?
Aye.
Lightcon?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
And also the invoice from the DOT for the bridge inspections that they did last fall. Our nineteen point oh seven share is three thousand five hundred and fifty five dollars. And along with that, they sent a piece of paper saying that we did not use federal funds to pay for federal funds, so we need to. From where we got it or not, so we need to show where we got that from, then have the chairman and the auditor sign that statement, so. I think that could all be in one motion.
All, uh, move to approve payment as well as having signatures to say we took it from someplace that's not federal.
So that's fine.
Yeah.
Second.
I have a question just out of curiosity, why nineteen point oh seven percent?
You know, it's been like that since I started working here, right?
I mean, why isn't it an eighty twenty year, but I'm, I'm, who came up with nineteen point oh seven?
They honestly say eighty twenty, every time you hear that in a conversation, it'll be eighty twenty, but when you get the invoices, nineteen percent.
Okay, I just was curious when I saw the number, if, who's that, who came up with that?
Somebody getting a track.
Somebody's getting the point nine three someplace.
Okay, did, did we get a motion in the second to approve that? Sorry, um, then we need a roll call for that as well.
Lightcon?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Oak?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
And we have another, our main shop has got two of those overhead furnaces and, uh, one of them has quit working now, so. We got quotes to replace the one that quit from Pumice Root for two thousand five hundred point five and from Lincoln D V for two thousand eight hundred and fifty five. Or this is just a motion to accept a little bit, if that's what you wanted.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in the second to accept a little bit, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign, motion is carried.
And it's that time of year where we're starting to get our summer maintenance contracts in and there's a list there of all the ones that we do have in so far. So we need the chairman and the auditor to sign those contracts for summer maintenance.
Make a motion to have the chairman and the auditor sign the summer maintenance contracts as listed on the sheet.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in the second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion is carried.
I have one more thing, that, uh, the new pickup that we, well, Steve's probably in the same boat here, but the new pickup we had ordered, has not been ordered yet. Chairman, uh, called me just last week and said that, I think in order of November or something like that.
And so, um, is it reading like?
The reason he says is because they're not taking orders for fleet vehicles. So that's like Steve's probably in the same boat.
We're not gonna get.
My, my name.
They cancel everybody else's, but ours are getting made, so.
So, much of that, we're not gonna pay more because.
Well, that was my question, so his thought is he wants to run it through as a private individual. Uh, in my name.
No.
No.
Okay.
That's a good answer, but he didn't say that, but doing have to probably raise the price, so.
Tell him to put his name on it.
Yeah.
How does that all know?
What, what type of vehicle is this thing? Is it a Chevy Chevy?
Chevy three.
So, so if we made it L T Z or something, then we get our name, but, or the high country or whatever.
There was something to do with their fleet.
Yep, well, it's because they're, they've only got so many chips or whatever, and they're putting them in the vehicles where they got the highest profit margin, plain and simple. So they're making that real fancy stuff and. Cause they've got orders on those too, cause they're six or eight months out.
I'm telling you, keep running it through as a fleet, otherwise we're not interested in that.
Otherwise, what could we end up getting charged?
Yeah, that's why I said, well, there's gonna be fifty dollars more, I said, oh, no, it's gonna be more than that. So I'm guessing, he didn't give me a number, but I'm guessing.
Frustrated for getting that.
All right.
Are all of them working all right? Are all of them working all right?
Yeah, we, uh, what's happening is we're getting too many miles on our service, we're gonna.
What a question, Kevin. Yeah, so we submitted it to Urbanstrom Cars in November, them to order it. He did that and it hasn't been ordered, or it's not being pursued?
Uh, the people in Chicago, wherever, have not put it on the, their assembly line yet as an order.
So it's been ordered through the local dealer, just?
Yeah, they turned their paperwork in, but the people out on the industry, they're out of them.
Where they make them.
Yeah.
Or not. From where I sit, it sounds like they owe us a truck then.
The only, the only thing, you're probably right, the only thing is we get to wait for two years or whatever it is, but we are locked into that price.
Okay, that, that was mine. That was where I was going with it, because we got a quote, otherwise we're gonna have to put this all back over there.
It was ordered yourself.
Yeah, it's ordered and we accepted a quote to this, we signed the contracts and we wanna pick up, so I mean, yeah, it should be good for the dollars. I mean, despite, like you said, we might have to wait two years unfortunately, but our. Well, if they wanna, based on it, that's a different.
Well, that's the thing, we could turn around and rebid it and have to wait two years right now too.
Yeah, we don't know.
We're better being off in the queue and lying and just waiting a while if we have to, I guess, and hopefully we got next through. Yeah, quit the deal.
Crazy, kinda like we're all worth.
We wanna, we wanna, we wanna give you money, we wanna pick up, please give us what?
Let me, let me ask you, you don't think they're trying to swerve on us, do you, Kevin?
No, because I, I heard that Butler had the same thing going on with the motor grader. Yeah, it wasn't ours, but somebody ordered them on November, for whatever reason, it never got put onto the line because. We, you know, it's a thirty two cent discount on government orders, so they just don't, not agree with it. They got other people to buy them for, for our whole tops.
Whole price. They've been refusing lots of, lots of bids in the last six months. He got an order to haul, they canceled it then. Or, or we're not making it, we're not doing nothing. And it's happened to the state fleet, got the same thing, they ordered thirty something to hauls, they canceled, they're not even on the list. So what's happening?
Well, it sounds like we're gonna have more maintenance costs then, but we're not gonna.
Keep us surprised of where that's at, like, is it this month or this, the order seems like?
Oh, good, so.
All right, anything else, Kevin?
That was it.
Thank you. Thank you very much, we'll move on to the sheriff.
Am I, oh, I kinda feel bad, I was. I expect asking for money, everybody else is to me too. Anyway, um, our server for our watch guard system is eleven years old, uh. And we need to upgrade it and replace it because it is on its last leg according to our I T. So what we did was Chief Panowski and I got together, we talked through the bid that you had in front of you, uh, we're gonna split the server cost fifty fifty. Since we're both utilizing it, and then we're also upgrading our body cameras, which are the old software. Uh, so our share of all of this is one, three thousand four hundred and fifty eight fifty. I mean, this is something we need to do, we haven't upgraded that since then, twenty eleven, I think is when we got it.
Look, Steve, these, these annual fees that you have on here for the service, is that something that we were paying before?
No, Motorola bought WatchGuard, so now all of a sudden, we asked, I asked the exact same question to our sales reps, what's this fee we're paying? Well, that costs upgrades and, uh, software upgrades, we've never paid it, no, we just added that once Motorola took over, so it was a.
The only reason I asked is because you wouldn't, otherwise it would have been budgeted before, you know?
Exactly, but they had, they, that's a new fee that we've never paid before.
So it'll be something sad to think about.
I'll have to pay next budget year for another three hundred or whatever, pretty early. So we've never paid that before.
So this is, this is body cameras as well as the cameras that are in the vehicles then?
No, the cameras in the vehicles will, 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 uh. They'll then, are just be able to be brought in, so all we have to really change is the body cameras.
But the, but this, this is the server that keeps all the information off of the cars and the body cameras?
Everything gets all uploaded from the car into this server, and then we pull it off of there and transport it to the courts, to the state string and wherever you want.
Oh, this is.
And it also does the, the car videos plus the body camera videos, and the new body cameras, well, no, that's one, new body cams will synchronize with the car cam. So you get both with, um, microphone on the same two systems, it's above my head, but it's, it's good, they tell me.
You have it in your budget, or this is?
No, I don't have this in my budget.
This, this is something that I'd recommend using that, the initial COVID dollars.
Yeah, I understand, yeah. I'll make a motion that we, uh, allow the sheriff to spend twenty, twenty three, four fifty eight fifty to, uh. Upgrade or, or the.
The city approved theirs, that's their.
The, the WatchGuard video quote.
From COVID though?
From the, pre, yeah, the initial COVID dollars.
Okay, Ivan, we have a motion in a second to allow the sheriff to spend twenty three thousand four fifty eight, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, is this roll call, or is that?
Um, yes.
Do it as a roll call.
Brett? Brett?
Aye.
Oak?
Aye.
Lightcon?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
The city approved their half of this last night, so it's, we're gonna be able to order, it's about a four month turnaround, I guess, we wanna kind of be the one of them. For sure. Thank you very much.
I want your. Steve, Steve, was there something else that we?
Well, there is, but I, I was, we have a, a. I don't really want to call it, it's the base unit for our, our video system, it's just the, the hardware. We don't have the cameras and it's a long story and I'm not gonna get into it here, but we have an extra one. So I, I asked the guy yesterday for a quote for, for the cameras, the microphone and all, you're, we need to perfectly get a fully functioning unit. So we have an extra unit for a third of the cost, I'm guessing, but he didn't give me the numbers yet, so I don't know what that's gonna cost, so I'll probably come back next time when we see if we can do that.
Basically, if a system goes down, you can put that system.
Or I can just put it in his spare car, we always have an extra car, I can jump in it, you know?
We have a.
Or we can, we can swap them out or. It's just, it's, you know, a brand new system, about fifty five hundred bucks, so I'm guessing, or how can, we could probably buy it for probably half of that. Or maybe a little bit less, but anyway, I'll bring that next time, if I get, once I get the quote.
Sounds good, thank you.
That's okay. Yep. Okay, that's all I have.
Steve? Thanks, Sheriff.
Sorry for me giving you.
That's okay.
Appreciate you.
What's up?
Yep.
Okay, we'll move on to new business then, uh, review ballot language for expiring mill levies, uh, did everybody get a chance to, to read through the three county measures proposed, uh?
Wording.
So this is the one for that extension then, they visit with you and you're okay with that one?
Yes, yep, yep, we kind of took theirs to our.
Yeah, kind of melded it together, okay, that's kind of what I was looking at, I go, there's good things on both of these.
Did you see these other ones as well?
I did, yes, yes.
Yeah, and I worked with Kevin.
So, this, a refresher from my mind, we're, we have to ask for two different questions for the highway one?
There was two different, uh.
So we have the possibility of two different mills or two different funds.
Expiring.
Expiring.
Yes.
So we can lose twenty mills, not ten.
Right. We don't, we never used all twenty?
No, but, but there's always been the option in case we had some large road project or something, so.
But the farm, the farm to market one, like, how I explain it is, the state doesn't give you free mills, like, you know, I shouldn't say free, but. It's not, it's not part of the levy limitations, so if you wanna use that, you have to.
Ask for.
Put some, yeah, yeah.
But it's not a normal levy that everybody levies, but it's something in the past that we have asked for and we have the option in cases needed.
And it's, I mean, I don't remember the last time.
Not at all?
I would either. I know I have, but it's been twenty some years.
Yeah.
It's good to have it in case you run into those problems.
They're in blood years.
Yeah, yeah, then it was capped out, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's just something that's there.
Well, you gotta go get match money, you know? Where the flood started out, most of them were ten percent match in the county. Oh, geez.
Boy, yeah, you were talking, yeah, you were talking millions, five millions of dollars to get it out of the water.
When the state topped up and they started paying a lot of it, they had to come up with three, wasn't it, when it three, and then it was down to less than one.
Yeah, we lucked out on the, ready, Ken.
Yes.
The state gave us a bunch of money.
Yeah, and we're still paying for match money on bonds and stuff like that, on top of the fact that we turned a bunch of asphalt back to gravel, because we just couldn't, didn't have the option. Yeah, I said, true it up. I guess I, I think it looks.
I'd make a motion to go ahead and, uh, approve their county language in the, uh, county measures.
All second.
All three.
All three.
Okay, we have a motion in the second to approve the language, uh, in county measures one, two and three for, uh, June ballot.
Just one question, R H is all right with it or not?
Yeah, yep, I worked together with, with Sarah and Lindsay.
They're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
I worked it in a different way and then they had it ordered a different way and then we kind of been in the middle of.
I like it, Steve.
But I think the important thing is to remind everybody that it's not a, an additional tax, it's just a continuation of.
So how do we get that out to the people?
Right, yes.
Can you spread the word?
Yep, there's some. There's a, there's a group that's working on how to get out the information for the extension.
Extension to be out, we keep.
Cause if you're a new person coming in, going over, it doesn't look like.
Right.
It looks like it's additional.
Yeah.
That's my fear, you know, because if they're not educated on it, you're gonna come in and say, it's like, really, you know, the.
I, I think the extension, uh, advisory committee is meeting, I think, tomorrow, Thursday night, Thursday.
Yeah, and they're, they're gonna come up with a plan on how to get in front of different groups and how to get the word out that this is what this does.
That's, that's a huge.
Getting close to it.
And then it's gonna be our job to just explain from the commission wise for the road one, that this is an expansion of it, just to keep the status quo and keep it the way it's been.
Brought up the township association meeting, so those type of grants.
Yep, yep.
Everybody accepted through it, I thought.
Yeah, yeah, but I think what they understand is not a raising, it's just the.
Yeah, you wanna keep the quality of roads we have now or try to keep them, I mean, that's, this is what we have to do.
Yeah, plain and simple.
Okay, well, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all, all those in favor of approving, uh, the county measures as described signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, all opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, we'll move on to approving payment for senior citizens.
Just what we budgeted last till now, correct?
Yeah. So moved. Second. We have a motion in the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, is this a roll call? Yeah, they're making payments?
Um, yes.
Cut checks, roll call.
Yeah. Cut, cut checks, they would call. Uh, Brett?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Oak?
Aye.
Lightcon?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Okay, motion is carried, and one to, uh, library board appointment, did we have more than one, uh, member?
Um, no, I had an email from the library board director that they have, um, appointed Daniel Howell.
Correct, of the best.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Yeah, and so he would be the county appointee to refill the remainder of Sawyer's term.
Yeah.
Uh, resigned, cause he couldn't make meetings, for example.
She did ask if we could change the appointment date to like April first. To just start, start fresh.
He hasn't been on?
He hasn't, no.
No.
Just started back.
Yes, we, we had two more slots, uh, they were able to find two people that wanted to sit, the county said he was going to appoint one of them and then the county would appoint the other one.
How many are on the library board?
I think it'll be at seven now, they'll actually have a full board, first time since a while, if we, we'll have a full seven. It'd be nice.
How many are on the foundation board?
Three, I believe.
Three? You're the chairman of that now?
I'm not, I'm not on the foundation board, I'm just on the library board.
You're on the foundation board.
I believe the president, vice president and secretary treasurer of the library board. My brother in that. Heidi, I can never say her last name correctly. Uh, McFannigan, I can never say her last name correctly. The vice president would be, um, I believe it's, uh, Paulette.
Paulson? Paulson?
Yes. And.
Paulson.
Yep, and then the, uh, secretary treasurer is Jessica Fish.
And this new board member, his name is Steven Hall?
Daniel?
Daniel.
Daniel Howell.
Yes.
Howell. We need a motion to, uh, accept him.
Yeah.
Point him, so moved. Second. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Okay, we have a motion in the second to approve the appointment of Daniel Howell, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carried. Raffle permit.[1772.81]
I'll do approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the raffle permit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion is carried. Home state credit abatements, we have five of us.
Yeah, we got a lot of home state credits. I'll make a motion to accept. Be certified.
We have a motion in the second to approve all five home state credits, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion is carried. Approval of a special permit?
Uh, that's the, your permit, correct?
Uh, yeah, this was the, uh, last minute. Cause apparently the person, the bar, the establishment that was supposed to do it, um, backed out.
Oh.
So, I signed it.
Okay, it's something we would have done anyway, it just was the last second, so, um, they've been, and they've been good to work with before, it's never been an issue with.
Breaks, breaks.
I'll make a second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second to approve special permit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion is carried. Visitors and delegations.
I don't need any money. Not, not till later this year.
Kind of date, maybe you should just, you know when to stop, right?
You're just getting that line?
This year I may actually do a grant, but.
And that, that would, that's music to our ears.
Okay, we'll move on to portfolios, Mr. Fred.
Uh, really have. Steve has something?
Just gonna update the commission on some of the things that are going on there.
So.
Uh, drug task force is, has had their hands full in the last three weeks.
Yeah.
Um, I think they've seized over five thousand fentanyl pills in the last three weeks.
Whoops.
Oh, that's a great.
And it's, but how, my question is how much are we missing?
Yeah.
Um, so, they're doing a phenomenal job and I just want you guys, you know, you don't hear about it a lot, cause we're still working. But I can tell, you know, like I tell you, just they are doing phenomenal right now. So, you know, a lot of them off the street that aren't going out, well, five, they're going for about thirty bucks a pill, so. Something like, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Yeah, for five thousand pills.
Thirty bucks a pill.
Thirty bucks a pill, thirty to fifty depends on. Thirty, thirty is the whole, I got to go get on that. Thirty to fifty. Wow.
What's the bills?
There's a lot going on with that and they're, they're working hard on it, so. Uh, we've gotten one, two, three, four, thousand pills, got four people. Thousand pills, had three more. And we've got a couple little ones with two here and there. Um, it's kind of scary, to be honest with you. Uh, how much is out there though? They are, they are, they're getting them, so we're, we're doing, I think, great work, but hopefully we're gonna get better, but. Uh, with that note, just so you guys know, we're gonna have to start moving prisoners again. Um, uh, just talked to Rob the other day. We've been utilizing rugby, we have eight in rugby, uh, where rugby can't take anymore, so now we're gonna do back a lot for safe. That's the next closest place that I can haul to, so. Uh, so when you start seeing villains from these other facilities, uh, D O C R is supposed to be here, the middle of April. Just to do, I don't know what they're gonna do, but.
Next week?
Next week or next two weeks, maybe? They didn't say a date, they just said middle of April. Huh?
Rugby's taking forever, I have something.
Oh, okay.
Sounds good.
So we've been, you know, we're really struggling to meet that fifty. Uh, but. Things are improving in the jail, uh, the new captain is, I think, God is at fault and he knows it, and he's working on it. Uh, things aren't changing overnight, but they are changing for the good. So, uh, it's just gonna take us a little bit, I don't think we can ask for another increase. I think it was sixty days from the day they put us back. So, we're probably looking at next month, so the end of April, I'm guessing we could ask, go back up to maybe sixty or sixty-five? And depending on how we're doing, uh, that's a yes or a no, but.
You don't know how the staffing is in the, for the COs and the.
But I think they have thirteen full time right now, so we're short.
So, so we're still short.
But we have had some returns, uh, we had, the work that previously have came back. Um, so that's a plus, we're being a little experienced there, you know, but now we're changing bad habits that they accrued and they're changing the back to good habits and that's, that's wrong, you know.
What's our, just out of curiosity, say, what's our turnover rate? Like, year over year, say, if we have fifteen COs, how many of them have long-term experience?
Uh, five years ago, very little. We had three, four, or five year experienced people, we have a few of the younger one, but now, I don't think we have a CO that's got more than a year on.
I looked at hired a couple here that came back on.
A couple of the ones that came back have a little bit more than that, but they just came back on here within the last month.
But our turnover rate is pretty high.
Pretty high.
But it's tough work.
Well, and it's, some of the confusion that was, yeah, it's just, yeah.
But I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, it's.
Things are getting better, cause there was a little bit of chaos, or a little bit of, uh, controlled chaos kind of thing. And, uh.
But the captain really made the difference.
Yeah, we, we were without leadership as far as supervisors. And they struggled with that highly, and that's kind of where the captains come in and you've got, you've now got a specific, uh, leadership role. And it's working well, but it's taking a little bit of time to get established and get things going, so. Well, it is, it is progressive for.
Good.
What are our numbers? As far as inmates, yesterday we were at fifty-six.
And then we got.
And I have to be at fifty.
Yeah, so you gotta ship some out.
So, that's why I said we gotta ship, you guys are, okay, we usually wait till after court on Monday mornings to see if anybody's, that's not tomorrow. And if they don't, then we just start making plans to get them on. Cause every day we're over fifty, we have to send a, a letter, uh, email to D O C R saying we're over. And then they want us to know a plan for it, you know, so we have to do that daily.
So they know that we're usually waiting for that Monday.
Oh, yeah, they, yeah, they, they know weekends are a little tougher than.
Well, yeah.
Well, we try to go on to the weekend at like forty-five. We have some room if they have a bad weekend.
Was there a timeframe where they were trying to out that again?
Sixty days from the day we got moved back to fifty, so we're cooking up probably the end of April. And then at that time, D O C R's had to, how we're doing, we can handle it or not, so.
So, how many do they usually know by the time?
Maybe as far as adding us.
So they know.
The last time we requested was sixty-five. We're at fifty, nor, our normal growth, well, our max is a hundred and two. Uh, the best, the best possible place is eighty. Eighty to eighty-two is seems to be our break even point. And that's kind of the goal we're going to get back to, is by eighty. We're now, but, uh, you know, with our inexperienced staff, that's why they're keeping us at the fifty. So, but we're, like I said, the new captain's working well, he's got a good attitude, uh, he's doing a lot of things, so. Hopefully he's gonna see a good turnaround here quickly. Doing well.
It leads me to ask the question, not of you Sheriff, but of, of Jeff and Ed, since you sit on that board, since we're running fifty and our break even is eighty. Are we, we're, how are we gonna, how are we gonna make up ends meet at the end of the year, if we continue to run under eighty for the whole year, are we gonna be, we're gonna be asked to pull any up cash then, in other words?
That should be coming monthly in our bills, but I don't know.
Well, I know that our bills are, we're, we're paying a daily rate, so the bills aren't gonna make it up other than we.
Cost share at the beginning of the year, we're paying the monthly rate, if we come up with a budget deficit at the end of the year of a half million dollars or something, because we're planning on running an eighty rate or not.
You're gonna have a three hundred thousand dollar deficit if you have to, you're gonna have to hand up the daily rate.
Well, the fortunate thing is, is that we're running in the black.
Yeah, previous.
We got some bills on here.
Yeah, we got, we got, we got some funds sitting there.
Yes, so we have some cushion money, but, uh, it, it can continue to carry us through.
Yeah, that's why we're pushing so hard to get back up to that sixty, sixty-five, here our number's starting to come up, so we can get back to that. Or, or at least not negative anymore, maybe, you know, dollar wise.
Hiring help is just.
Well, our favorite asset for D O C R, it's all under their control.
Yeah.
We have no.
Yeah, I know, I know this, I'm just, I'm just asking, you know, where we're running right now, I mean, we're only three months into the year, basically, I don't have a, so, having a plan in place, but.
Well.
I mean, hiring help is a po, is, I mean, look at it, they're running a job fair, I think, later this week, and there's sixty businesses or something, that, I mean, everybody's looking for help, so it's just a constant metal of trying to get people to work for him.
When they knocked us back to fifty, the last, this is this last time, we were at seven and a half employees. Which we just, which made sense, it just wasn't enough.
We've done a pretty good job then to get back to fifteen at least.
And then we're back, now we're back, you know, so, that's when they bumped us back to fifty, now we've got to add five more employees, uh, six of them, so hopefully we can. Do some forward movement.
What we do, Sheriff, deputies, we do to see.
And we still, uh, we're still there if they need us, so we've, you know, we're still filling in and reacting.
Try to mess.
I still think the secret is to get them trained while you put them back there.
Up to do. North Dakota, North Dakota has never, entire state has not trained before they put you in the jail. So then you're two or three days of rotation and then you're evil. Uh, Cass County doesn't do it, Grand Forks doesn't do it, Bismarck doesn't do it. There is no real.
That's just, and I don't know, that's crazy to me.
It is to me.
They throw you out the curb, aren't a jailer and say, watch what you do, and go.
That'd be like if we hired deputies and put them on the road, they're absolutely training.
Yeah, you tell people that, that's what I do now.
And then you fix the problem, yeah.
There are a lot of counties that.
You know, but, but they went to a certain amount of peace officer training, at least.
That still doesn't mean they're.
I know they're not, but at least it's a baseline of something, yes.
The states went halfway, and you imagine that we have deputies trained, city control trained, I don't have COs trained before we put them in action. You know, they went halfway, maybe, you know.
Man, yeah, it's crazy to me.
We get no help from schooling or. I mean.
We're working on it, yeah.
Could open up a.
What order it is, what happens? Uh, get the spew over, so, yeah, I'm sorry, I just wanted to give you a little update.
We all know where we're at.
Okay.
Commissioner Fred, you're now, I, I have nothing, nothing else, you know, airport and chamber and all those other entities, uh, that we sit on. Um, we'll need later on this month, still pretty early, but, you know, everything's moving forward with the airport, um, still looking for, um, E A S. Bids for essential air carriers to, uh, you know, that bid will be going out through the federal Department of Transportation and hopefully, uh, we get some good competitive, uh, bids coming in for our commercial carrier, so. But. Like I said at the previous meeting, hopefully it's not bobs, car jumpers, or, uh, something like that, that we have a, you know, comparable commercial jet airliner that comes in and, and bids a service. And we prefer to stay with the, the Denver market, that's been working really well with us and, you know. One of the, one of the requirements for essential air is two flights a day, up to twelve flights a, a week kind of thing, and so. We're hoping that we get good, uh, and partnering with, with Jameson has, has worked in well in the past and, and they're willing to continue with that relationship, so. You know, it'd be a Devil's Lake, Jameson, Denver type of connection, yeah, so. But. Good idea? That's all I have.
Perfect. Commissioner Brown?
Just senior deals, they're looking at changing their dishwasher, I think we talked about this before. Originally, they wanna do the flooring at the same time. I heard quotes, they had one quote, nineteen on a dishwasher, you want, or this, something like that? They don't have one on the floor yet.
It's like twenty-five years old.
Oh.
Yeah, it's washed a lot of.
Put twenty on it.
It's mean. Washed a lot of dishes.
It's original, it's original. So, yeah.
It's done.
That's all they ask for is, we're, we're lucky we got that. Absolutely, absolutely, it's a good building. They do a good service. So, yeah.
Sure, Commissioner Lightcon?
Uh, let's see, for Devil's Lake, we met, uh, last month, we have a, we have new board members, we have one or two new board members, so that was nice to see, um.
Then I see that, uh, you have your. For Devil's Lake Executive, what is it, uh?
The annual, annual meeting is coming up, I forgot to write the date down, I appreciate you mentioning that, but it's, it's coming up here shortly?
Annual meeting. I think it's in the.
Yeah, I had the date written down someplace and I forgot to bring it, I apologize, but it's coming up here shortly? Oh, you've got a letter?
The thirteenth, the thirteenth of April, three, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I knew it was coming out, I just couldn't remember the date off. Juggle minded for us, what a guy.
Thirteenth of April.
Thirteenth of April. I believe that's at eleven forty-five at the college, at the, uh, at the, uh, lunch room there. I believe, uh, Commissioner Gary, a, a commissioner's gonna be coming up to speak, so we're gonna talk about value-added agriculture type stuff, since we had some pretty good progress in value-added agriculture stuff in, uh, in, in our area, with some of the stuff already is done, so. Thirteenth of April, you got it? Uh, so that'll be good, um. Uh, we're gonna have some turnover on that board, just because obviously we're gonna have, uh, new, uh, individual from the city, since the mayor sits on that board from the city right now. Uh, our new city administrator was at our last meeting, so I got to visit with him a little bit. Um, you know, I'll be going off that board later this year, and then we also have, uh, Brett, uh, Oscar, who is on that board, who will be going off, because he actually accepted them a different job up. In Campbell County, so, gonna have some new, some new board members there, so. So it'll be, uh, different for that organization, but that'll be all right. Uh, new ideas aren't bad. Uh, North Central Housing, now, we're bringing in, uh, some training for our staff, uh, first week of May, so that'll be nice, uh, we have a full staff again, so it'll be fantastic, uh, working to get apartments turned over there, so we can get, uh, more people in those houses, in those apartments. Um, social services, uh, we met last month. Um. Pretty standard, uh, child protection stuff has been busy, 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 as it always is, uh, always, as, as you can see when stuff goes out, we're constantly hiring, because it's always, always need somebody for staff, because it's always a constant churn, uh, when you have a staff that large. Um, we're hoping, uh, in the next little while, we'll be able to go ahead and do some site visits on our different locations, to see, since, you know, we've been wanting to do that, since we went to a zone model and then COVID hit and then it was pretty much, can't go see anything, so, we're hoping to go, cause we always talk about, well, we're in this building, we're in this building. Just have to kind of imagine it, cause you've never been there before, so, we're hoping to do some, some meetings at those different locations, so we can see what we're working out of, but, uh, there's been some improvements in the Benson County office as well as up in Rollin County, so that's good. The redesign for the state, where they put together DHS and the other one, Health, and put them under the, they, I can't remember what they're calling it now, but they put them together. So there's been some changing up top in terms of who reports to who, and so there's been, uh, uh, you know, like anything, when you're changing who you're reporting to, different models, you're learning different people, and so there's been a little bit of learning there, but I think it's been going okay, uh, according to Rhonda. Um, trying to think of what else? What else have I got to, what else have I done? State attorney, I haven't talked to both lately, so things must be busy.
Busy weekend.
Yeah.
Between the drugs and the chase and.
Yeah, that's how we got to go, trying to chase it.
Uh, wanna give special commendation to, uh, the police officers involved in that. Resolved it with, without anybody being interfered, whether it's officer or civilian. Did a good job. So. Other than that, I don't have.
Okay, uh. I saw we had a washout on county tan, got that fixed up, so that's good, turnaround. It's that type of the, it's that time of the year, everyone watches the roads, cause culverts are still froze up and water starts to move and then it finds its way around the culvert, and so, anytime, anybody driving gravel, pay attention. Never know, never know when you get up a cave yet.
Put a hole in one of the back?
Got a pretty good sized one.
Yeah, when we lucked out, the water all went down, so it was, there was no water in the hole we got there, did we spill it in?
Well, okay.
Yeah.
It's that time of the year, though, you get that head pressure behind the culvert, uh, if it froze up, boy, that, all it takes is just a leak around the side and it's time to go, so. Everyone pay attention out in the countryside, if you're driving on gravel, make sure there's nothing, one, one could be on paper too, but, gravel's, gravel's more likely. Uh. Extension, that's gonna be doing well. They're gearing up for the, for the June ballot, so. But all I have.
You, Commissioner Oak?
Um, make it, start off with Lake Access, they put out bids for the sewage cleanings of the fish station. Uh, to get rid of that, cleaning and mowing contract was extended, we're good there. Uh, the Fair Board, they obviously put on the presentation today. Make sure they're happy with that. Recorder's nothing, and then the treasurer office, Lisa would like to, or she wants our opinion of bringing back Bremer for an update on everything, and I told her earlier, that'd be great, just get with them, other than we're gonna work with their schedule, so that's a good one to put it on.
Well, and, and I think when we set that up with Bremer, they agreed that they wanted to come in and get your annual, and then you have a report, it's about time to.
Yeah, and after I told Lisa, I specifically myself was like, I usually didn't update that way, especially now that we're new at it. Hey, this is where we work, this is where we move, this is how it's working, especially with the economy how it is, you know, with all the crazy stuff, seems like it's making money for us, look at the numbers. Better than what we were doing just in the bank, that's for sure. Um, and, uh, fair board, if you could, when the frost comes out, just look at the driveway and stuff out there. I was thinking, you know where that culvert, where you get, that culvert at? If there be possibility, maybe put some like one inch rock in that ditch so it doesn't fill any. Was, because the grass never grew in there, if it would just be like a one inch rock, maybe just like a filter system, uh, you can look at it. I was just, yeah, yeah, I don't want to have a plug that culvert up where we put the rock, oh, yeah, the one side especially, would help with that. Maybe something you can look at, I guess, I want you to actually, you guys to do that.
Is there a lot of gravel that needs to be?
Probably just be bladed, it's not, it's pretty good actually, maybe, uh, where the building is, in the parking lot there, maybe to the piece of that, like a, the gravel or, and a mucky, more of a clay coming through. But other than that, it looks, it looks really good, I'd say when the frost comes. Other than that, that's all I have.
Perfect. Andy, the courthouse isn't on fire, is it?
Nope, it survived, it survived well last time.
Okay, excellent, well, in that case, I.
That's amazing, that's amazing.
Uh, is there anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, I've indicated motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Same.
We stand adjourned. Thank you all so much.
Oh.